18th Boebi City Council Meeting. Rule call. Boyovich, Heckamovitch, Johnson, Meyerneil.
Here.
And I'm here with John Dimich as well. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Boyovich there, second. Second by Heckamovitch. Any additions or corrections or anything on that?
I'd like to add something to this other part time, our, uh, police department's part time. Let's contact you about what a part time is.
Okay. Anything else?
Um, I would like to address, uh, a letter that I got. Under.
Council?
Under, maybe under council, yeah.
Letter from concerned citizens?
Yeah.
Anything else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Guest, Reagan Gleason. And we're gonna watch the video on playgrounds, is that it?
You wanna serve that?
It's a machine.
There's a lot of talk about what's going on with the world. Activity, discord, guitars. But I don't see it that way. There's too much right from the world, there's too much to do.
When I live out there, I see points. I see potential. I see imagination, collaboration, celebrations. I see leaders, advocates, creators. I see decisions being made, healthy decisions, that are just for the body, for the mind, for the soul, for each other.
I see people working together, helping each other. And by helping each other, we discover who we really are, and how the good people should be.
So that we grow.
We lead, we follow, we take time.
We take chances. We imagine, together. We don't just tolerate each other, we celebrate each other, our similarities and our differences.
Yeah, we fall down, then we get back up, we climb.
We try, and we fail.
We try, and we succeed. By pushing the limits of ourselves, can we realize that there are no limits to what we can do?
When I'm over there, I see the promise of the future, I see tomorrow.
And for a better tomorrow, we play today.
Chris?
Okay, Evan.
Okay, Evan.
Okay, Evan.
Right, so. Reagan, what do you have for the council?
Hi, Reagan Gleason, want to ask the city to listen to upgrade the building. Cause it's old and, um, I want everyone to know. Like you said.
Alright, which park are we talking about? The one over there by, uh, Public Safety Building?
What we wanna do is, the park was put in, early 90's when the RV park was put in. It's getting old, we had new repairs. Uh, this year, one of the structural members broke. Uh, we did a quick repair on that. Not a banding repair, but a quick repair to get it back in shape. Uh, I met with, uh, Joe from the League of Minnesota Cities last year on the playground. And they are really pushing for VDA accessibility on playgrounds. And if we do anything in the future, that's VDA. So, we are looking for permission from the city council, citizens in the city, to open the playground to do an upgrade. Reagan has started a fundraiser, I'm sure most of you have heard. And we're gonna look for grants, we're gonna put a committee together. Uh, we've got, uh, Boys and Girls Club of Grand Rapids and Greenway willing to help out. I believe Beautiful Boebi in a way, right?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, Grand Rapids Area Community Fund had a grant opening at Kohls Sunday night, so. I spent my Sunday night bringing a grant, giving in for that money and for that, I believe. Tara, how much has been raised by Reagan?
About seventeen hundred.
Seventeen hundred. They put in for the grant for two thousand. If we get that, we'll get thirty-seven hundred. I will budget for whatever we need to do, we get a tire swing down there, that'll be phase one. Also, the phase one, we want a new pond, uh, there's a grant. The grant we put in for the pond before, we didn't get because we had put in both stocking with fish and keener and like that, so. Uh, the program's right there, stated that if we take that out and reapply, there's a good possibility we'll get that grant. So, if we clean up that pond for the tire swing, phase one for next year, phase two in 2021. Uh, get the rest of the playground in, possibly the hockey rink. So, that's what we wanna do. See, a commission to a.
What's that?
A four and a half.
And a four and a half.
There's no word.
It is.
I'll make a motion that the city, you have the city's permission to exonerate the playground.
Okay. Motion by Boyovich, second by Johnson, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Good work, Evan, good work.
Okay, and then, uh, uh, we wanted to set up a dedicated fund where the money that has come in already, Tara told me that she has already done that. So, I don't know if there needs to be a motion, you know, you know, a motion to dedicate a fund, you know.
No.
Nope. No, no motion needed. Okay, so that's done, and then the last thing we would need is a resolution to accept donations, so we can probably have that ready for the next meeting. Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for, uh, your week.
Hello.
Thank you, Reagan.
Can I, can I just add one more thing?
Yes.
That we had, what we had also talked about is that we are also starting right now just to do a community type survey, um, to kind of get people on board, kinda hear what they have to say. So, we created a survey, um, we are distributing that survey, um, at the library, I'm hoping. And I, Tara, I don't know if you saw that, you know, or not, about this kind of playing the place where we can put all the surveys there. But we're, Boys and Girls Club is going to partner with that, and they're going to use their children, their kids, to help with that too, part of their project. Um, and the, maybe Beautiful Boebi will help out with that too, and Rochelle's going to have a, a chunk at her, um, cafe to distribute to people when they come in. Um, and so really like our next phase after we accomplish these things, is that we're gonna do as much survey gathering as we can, so that by January 1st, we'll have some real good data and stuff that we, that will help us pay grants and things like that, so. And Rochelle is also going to, um, create an online survey with, that would, is like the other survey, and it will be on our website.
And can be, and can be shared across platforms.
Yeah.
Is this survey made up already?
I do have a copy of it, um, that I brought. Sorry, I was gonna make one copy.
Do you just have one copy right now?
I do, but I can pass it around with the ones.
We have a couple out before you.
We should get Sam from the domain, get a rain slide, gum drops. We have lolly tops, I can wear.
Why can't we get our groups from that Blanton Foundation when we took our leadership?
We, we talked about that at the last meeting, we should look into that.
So that's what we wanted to do, was a creative project of, of split the funds, so.
Also, Kevin was waiting till we had fair people, um, he's gonna have, uh, ask the engineer to just draw some designs. Um, of adding the plate, or the, maybe the playground area, hockey rinks.
Kind of cards I think should be moved down there too, in, in my opinion, so. So, I think that should be, if we can put off it down there.
If we can put it off.
What, then somebody brought up a splash bag, I think, at the last weekend, and that would probably be.
We do have, we do have quite a bit of room down there, you have a lot of infrastructure.
And then with the pond, to make it aesthetically pretty, you know.
Flowing tennis court along?
We are, and part of.
Lots of balance.
Part of the survey is to kind of get us looking at big possibilities, like, I mean, let's dream big, kind of thing, okay, like, I mean, this is why we're kind of gathering the data, not to say we can put in a $2 million playground, we're not saying that, I'm just saying, let's let our imagination.
It's too private, do you know that? Shut up. It's too private.
On, on average, we're looking at about fifty thousand dollars for a regular playground that's VDA.
That's just.
Or, I'm sorry, I missed the playground.
And actually, um, I believe that Kevin will ask one, one playground person, we don't, we wouldn't obviously know who we're gonna go with or anything, but the guy who was helping us, he's going to drop plans, maybe for like a fifty thousand, a pair of fifty, fifty to a hundred, and then like a hundred, a hundred and fifty, just so we see, just so we have something to look at, to visualize.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Can I, maybe for clarification, I'm sorry, I'm just a little late on the ball here, so I'm just, can I, I'm just going to do it anyway. Boys and, I, Lori Cane is also with the Boys and Girls Clubs at Grand Rapids and Greenway, and when the statement of Boys and Girls Clubs will be involved, that does not come with any financial, uh, support, it could come with some fundraising opportunities for our civic organization, or our civic club within Boys and Girls Club called Torch Club. So this is a civic project that we are, um, going to take on within the Boys and Girls Club to help the community. So I just wanted to clarify that it does not come with any money, I'm getting paid to help with this, um, through Boys and Girls Club, but other than that, there's no money.
And I think, what Lori said, our being too, is she, the thing is to teach our youth organization skill, and we should, so it's.
I think, I think there are a lot of companies in the area to like, kind of briefly discuss, that may be willing to help.
I wasn't sure.
Donate.
Right. And once we gather all this data, and we actually have proof that the community wants this, um, that we can, you know, show people that people want this, then I think the next phase would be that we would set up some sort of committee that will lead this. Um, and whatever that looks like, but then that committee would, would be the ones who would do a lot of the fundraising and start reaching out to all of us, and, you know, they'd be the ones in charge of this, so.
And, and I think the city council would have to approve that committee, if one approval. Drawn to creation, maybe? Since it's a city owned.
Since it's a city owned, yeah.
So, you wanna get that in or you wanna make?
No, I would think we just collect that until January, I have a card. If, I mean, if it's, and then January, we'll revisit without the little things that we're doing until January.
And we're gonna go ahead. We're gonna go ahead with phase one, the tire swing and the pond, don't need to worry with the ponds if we get to Grand Rapids here, so, but if you want, go ahead with phase one.
So I think if you correctly said tire swing into the pond? Is that what it is?
It's like, of course, why do we make it?
We have to, we have to provide a.
Well, she said, you had to involve cleaning the pond and tire swing, I'm like, are you launching in the pond?
Then we're back in like here.
That's why we're gonna miss conceptual drawings, so we know where to put the playground or the tire swing, because tire swing was in front first.
Well, even for hockey rink, I think it, like that last meeting, we were talking, we don't have to put concrete underneath the, that's the name of those little ones, that's the last five, so, we can do that pretty cheap.
And whatever happens, like, if the city doesn't want, I mean, if the community doesn't want this huge playground or something, you know, we'll still have the tire swing incorporated into this, for sure, the tire swing is going to happen, and that will be, that would be the first thing that kind of takes it out, right, Reagan?
I have something to say. Uh, the reason how we got all the money is we started ordination, and then we got water and water, and then we came to this point, and then what I want at the playground is a tire swing, a bigger basketball court, and a swing for people in their chest, so they can have.
Just one ever again, thank you.
Thank you, yes, thank you.
Right, so, moving on, beautiful Boebi.
Alright, um. It was, okay, so, boy, we parked over there, and, yeah, we had a really good time, played games, sold hot dogs, we drove to a sold out right away, um, so next year, we'll probably get some work, but, uh, it was a good time, lots of friends, we had probably the most volunteers I've ever seen, um, there, helping us out, it was really cool. Um, we had a big fundraiser, something like that too, and, uh, sports, kids, and all that fun stuff, so. Uh, so from that, we actually, we got a $200 check, uh, to go towards a new water vehicle, um, and, so, yeah, hopefully by next year, it'll be something different, because I know a lot more we got than I was, not really, not in the moment, so. So, yeah, so, um, and then the only thing we got coming up is, uh, two craft fairs, uh, we're not sure on the date on one of them, but the other one will be, um, December 7th, which is gonna be the vintage Christmas that we had last year, with, um, you know, Santa Claus and, and the hayride and all that kind of stuff. Um, so what we're asking for, for that, is for the city council to donate the money towards the, the events. Uh, I believe last year, it was, right, about forty dollars?
It was seven fifty, we get them to fifty.
Oh, just for the, you're right, for seven fifty?
For four hours.
Okay, so then, maybe we'll find something else out for that, but at some point in time, you know, we would like some money from the city, um, to help us do that event, so, um, as, and we're in the Christmas tree, I'm gonna share a lot of kind of fun stuff too, we did last year, so. Everybody wants to go bear with a Christmas tree, I'm not sure where we're gonna put it, so, but, uh, we'll figure it out, so. Uh, and then, the other thing that I have, is that, uh, our, uh, water and grocery owner, she's done for the year, she did an amazing job, and we would like for the city council to acknowledge that, and hopefully write a, a letter to the donor support system, and, uh, just acknowledging, uh, her, her volunteer work for the group, so.
I would get all her contact information, whatever Tara, we can have her write a letter of appreciation, thank you.
Okay, I, I would like to go right to the donor support.
Yep.
So if that's needed, I can handle a little bit of that myself, and say something, so if that's, you know, one second, so if you just email to me or whatever, but it would be really awesome if, you know, each one second and anything like that.
Sure.
Um, you know, just something like that, so, okay. That's all I have tonight, so.
Thank you. Can I, oh, can I say one more thing? Uh, then, if we're not going to approve, um, four hundred dollars, cause I, I, I just would like the city council to put on their mind that, um, that each one of us has something that we paid for this year, and this, because it was so successful last year, and it was, it was a wonderful event that brought a lot of community members, it was kind of like, you know, a Boebi, you know, event. We would just like, separate a Beautiful Boebi, because Beautiful Boebi will do the cookies and the Santa and all that kind of stuff, you know, but that, we really need a little bit of money that would actually pay for this hayride.
And the hayrides open to everybody, anybody, whether they live in the community or just.
Yes, right. Yeah. And that's if, I mean, prices, something?
That's, it was, it was a miscommunication between Ann and the, with the Boebi group, she had told us four hundred dollars, it ended up being seven fifty, Todd and Ryan kicked in the extra money to pay for it, we didn't find out until he showed up.
Okay.
So, that's all.
Have you got a confirmation?
Well, and, and I'm sure also, I mean, there's more than one person that's here, right?
Right, right. Can you give a confirmation of it, like, for our next meeting, or before your event is going to take place and?
Yeah, a walk or two?
Yeah, yeah, maybe that's what, because I'll shop around a little bit, and I, I do know some of the owners of communities, so, so, um, you know, I can maybe see. But even if I license the lawn, or, licensing shit. So, yeah, so we will, uh, get that for, for next month, and, uh, but, yeah, that is something that this department minds, that, you know, if it's not the hayride, something else, maybe, you know, we, we, Beautiful Boebi put a lot in, you know, we donated the Christmas tree, a lot myself last year, so, we do, we would like something from this thing, and that, so.
Just get us, get us some phones, and we'll, we'll, uh, that we can find out, but, right, it's a nice meeting.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thanks for being here, too.
Yeah.
Alright, public forum, anybody from the community that would like to address the council? Alright, moving on, consent agenda. What's that? Consent agenda, minutes for the September 4th, 2019 council meeting, and dispersments for claims and payroll, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Boyovich, there, second. Sorry about Meyerneil, any discussion about, anything on the, uh, minutes for the dispersments for claims and payroll? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to department heads and committees, engineer John Madden's status report, anything?
There's no response.
Okay. Public Works, you have an option. Hold again.
No. Okay, uh, let's just jump right into my report. Be quick and hold this.
Sure.
Okay, uh, so, Understreets, oh, I'll ask anybody, you got any, need first, um, please, cross. I have? I gotta do this, I'm old.
You gonna be Sam at this party?
Yeah. No, no. So, under, uh, under nine, Understreets, uh. Uh, we had, uh, Nancy and I met with a gentleman from Iastac County, about, uh, pond, uh, and he stated that we should be putting in a NPCA stormwater grant instead of that CPL grant, uh, so I researched that, and we are not eligible for a NPCA grant, because we are not a stormwater community. So, uh, he, Derek Iastac County's working with Corinne right now on stormwater issues entering the drought rate, and he said he will be visiting us soon. Uh, might want to start looking into that stormwater, so. Moving on to the 14th, uh, there are fractures on the old fire hall, he wrote problems with the building, and we'll fix them, he will rent us the space we needed for the same price, and we were charging him a hundred dollars a month, and, like. Uh, we had talked about heat before, he wanted us to heat, we do not need heat, oh, you got to do the building under a structure. So, John, what do we have to do to sell, to transfer that building, we can't use it, and we need to liquidate it, we have someone that wants it, and puts it back on the tax rolls, can we simply, uh, transfer ownership to the interested party, or do we have to go through a process?
We don't have to use, use a modified version of a bidding, we just simply must kind of know ourselves that you can just sell it for free, and, uh, it'll take offers, and if you want to set a minimum, otherwise you can take, uh, to do a considered offer, so such and such a day, once you get one or more than that, it's, I, myself.
Is there any way to work this, since we have a current contract with them, that they would have the first option?
First rate refusal, because they're already.
Cause we're involved, we have a first time.
Um, probably didn't put that in. Uh, if we had done it, then first.
Were they just giving?
We would have, uh, a little easier.
With an option, yeah.
Then we have better say, uh, than anybody else, or like.
Correct, okay.
How many, uh, publications do we need in a local paper?
Just one.
So is there a motion to put it in, uh, Scenic Range News, that, uh, our intent is to sell the old fire hall, and looking for any offers?
I'll make a motion. I mean, is, that's what we have to do?
You're second?
I'm second.
Motion by, to what, or Heckamovitch, second by Johnson, any further discussion? Dan, it looks like you have something.
I do. That would be the standard one where we have the option to refuse any and all.
Right, we need to have an option, yeah.
Okay, because I just don't want it to come back that, oh, I offered more, but.
And I think you have every right to say, you know, uh, that we also want to know if you're going, if you're buying the building.
Right.
What you're gonna do with the building.
And a plan.
And a plan. And repair it to the cost.
Yeah.
We got a bid off?
Yep. But that actually be in it, so that will take care of a lot of.
Well, we want to submit a plan with, with repairs to the building.
And, and use, that you know that.
Right. Or it's not gonna be used for something nefarious.
There might be a, yeah.
Well, and with the cities might continue to, if that's part of it.
Right.
We need the space.
Must allow the city to rent the, or portion for extra more dollars.
Yeah, but we pretty much know what the city wants out of it, so can you, and Tara, make up the, what should be in it? Is that okay, Tara? What's that, Reagan? You will put your guess together and come up with a proper advertisement? Yeah, thank you.
See your research and stuff, alright, so, we got a motion for the second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone, anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, then FYI, and that's number 18, our street sweeper is ready for the bowling yard, uh, if you want to read that, if you have, I don't know, but, I, I think we need a budget for the street sweeper.
Are you looking, you want that one taken?
Either. I haven't, yet. Or even a jointly funded? Yes, yes. And we don't know what the percentage is gonna be, so I wanna get into that right now, we're at a rate now of sixty-fourty on the old street sweeper, so. And we can't, we can't afford to do that, no, I know that. Well, we could.
And is, is Corinne, will this be a surprise for Corinne, or they have?
I already, I already talked to Ari, I don't know if he's informed their council or not, but I'm gonna save a budget for it.
Okay, just in case, okay.
Just to throw something out there, so you know I looked at other avenues, is I did talk to Derek Riondo that does street sweeping, and he's going in great, and I figured it costs us thirteen to fifteen thousand dollars a year. And right now, with the street sweeper we have, you know, we, we pay fifteen dollars an hour for use, and then, uh, forty percent of repairs, and so we did buy twenty-five hundred to three thousand a year, so, I mean, if we're gonna pay thirteen to fifteen, then make yearly payment for the sweeper, for the sweeper, so. Okay, moving on, number 22, the property at 3028 Avenue, as a mission, whereas the garage is approaching on Third Street Railway, uh, the corner is asked for easement, as they have sold property, and, several, uh, seller will pay for the easement, property's already been pulled on, and, and the money was withheld from the seller to pay for the easement. In the back, there's the easement that I had John drive up. And, but I did have a couple questions for John, uh, Grant, he desires to gain, sell three feet of Third Street to the Boebi, uh, does that up to say Third Street Railway, or is Third Street fine?
Third Street, I worked with, uh, Cindy at the others, I worked, we looked at the mapping.
Okay. And then, what is a dollar sixty-five cents?
Uh, you have to have a dollar on it, because there's no one, you know. Basically, I have to have some, yes.
Okay. And, I think that was it. And, I think that was it.
Who's also set?
That would be Dr. Henshaw. Rose Henshaw's the, Rose Henshaw's a seller, I'm not sure who the owner is. Rose Henshaw requested easement. And the easement will hold property, correct?
Right, once it's, uh, signed and recorded, it'll be there for all the after.
And then I noticed, John, that page three is, looks the same as page two, is that just, uh? Would the two, no reason on that?
No, in, in case she would, like, she was gonna be at the same time, otherwise in, in some ways with the city. But you can do it if off once.
Yeah, I'm not sure whether, I think we can drive us. So we need people for the easement, it's not costing us anything, so.
So.
Is, is the motion by Dvojich, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Johnson, any further discussion about easement?
What is, what is the exact, what are we, we're approving this, is exactly what we're doing? We set a dollar note or we don't, we're not setting a dollar note?
So there's some consideration of some price.
I thought that, but I just didn't know why that number wasn't.
So you don't, you don't want an easement?
Yeah, I, I would look at the property and then just say, I just, um. Is it an entire easement along the whole side of their property or is it just for the garage in itself?
The whole north line of the property.
Okay, we got a motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and then number twenty-three, the realtor that sold that house happens to own the house kitty corner across, uh, Travis' old house. And their garage is also on the alley railway. And after I did some looking, we have a lot of properties that have structures on the railway. So, she wants to know if she can give an easement as well. I told her I would bring it up here and, but we got to, generally, that would be something anybody requesting an easement pays for themselves, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, uh, would be, we'd be willing to give her an easement for that property as long as she pays for it.
So, we have, uh, great railways and over whatever time, for whatever reason, structures were built down on us.
And, but I can, old days, the houses were built in the forties, it was never caught. So, see, there's, there's no, there was no property in back then.
Right.
If you look on the plaque, there's very few monuments that have been put in.
What do we have to do, is there any other structures in the easement? Is it, is it simpler for us, the city, to look at that, say, there's four different places here that need to have issues? Or how issue can we fix them?
We have to reach property.
No, I think you want to do each one, is it, the underlying law says that you own the property, there's nothing they, you rent them, that's to do.
When it comes up, address it, that's each.
Right, that's each.
So we need a motion for an easement or next time when John creates an easement?
Wait, I don't, do we need, do we need a motion to have him drive it up or just a motion approval once it's dropped?
Once it's.
Yeah, okay.
I won't contact her, probably won't issue one favor, but I do want.
Okay. Want me faster? Okay, next, uh, let's see, that's all I have on the report and then the whole business underneath is the bus garage problem classified ourselves. Uh, I had the engineer do two different draft concepts. One is actually putting storm catch basins in Fourth Street and piping it to the pond. And then the other one is just doing some landscaping and tarring of the driveway going into the bus garage. And of course, you can see that one's a lot cheaper. But still not cheap. And this area also is, and this is, this is kind of the catch twenty-two is. The grant we're putting in for, for project covers that part of Fourth Street, right now we'll get that one. So, if we do get the grant, we're gonna be probably doing the storm drains anyway. So I don't know if we should hold off on this. When do we find out if we get the grant?
When do we find out if we get the grant? Me? On the second, was it?
I would, I would like to hold off on it, so.
I mean, we're the ones initiated in the first place, the bus garage. And we did put, we did put a rock a lot there and we saw that that's gonna smash down. But that's a no.
Yeah.
Then we can catch up, can I, but who's property is it?
Those probably.
Is it the bus garage's property or is it the city's?
Well, if, if you look at the railway, that's, I brought it up at the meeting we talked about, the railway is screwed up there and actually his property goes into probably a third of the street. But we're responsible for this street.
The spirit of it is supposed to be one thing and just because it's written one way, does that, that, would that be a fatal error saying that we're gonna have to pay to get it, John? I mean, that, that's not clear.
So, see, the problem too is, is, the problem is the, the rain runoff.
Yep.
You know, which we are responsible for controlling.
Okay.
You know, even, even if, even if it's his property on the street, we're responsible for the rainwater coming down all of Fourth Street.
And unfortunately, that street wasn't cut properly for drainage, so it's going in that way.
On the BoV.
Well.
A lot of things are done back, way back, we haven't had the jerk infrastructure upgrades, let's say, on a lot of things over the years, matching what.
Right. Over the years.
Well, I think we can maybe through one more in winter and if we get this grant, we can go for higher and that, we'll, you know, keep it in mind that.
I mean, I thought, I thought, well, most engineer processes are high.
Yeah, they.
I thought it was, I, I thought it'd be another eight to ten thousand, but. And I could, you know, I could talk to Booter and say, hey, how much we can do this.
Yeah.
And basically, I know Booter's cost for store footwork anyway, that's the angle I'm at. Anyway. Still, if we're gonna, if we do get a grant, we're ripping up Fourth Street anyway.
Well, I think after this many years, it can last one more minute.
Yeah, that's all.
That's all I have. That's all I have.
Unless they're looking to talk longer.
All right. So, anything else from Public Works, guys? All right, moving on, Police Department, if you're in the wall. The chief called me and said he was not gonna be able to be here. And there'd be nobody to represent, represent the Police Department, but we do have, uh, an item for domestic violence awareness under police.
It's just a brother asking for permission to put stickers for men and some vehicles for one of the October.
Yep. Will you guys able to do this letter? Do they have any motion to approve this, to have it as a contract or is it something that just be done without a motion?
I would think you'd work on that. This is a motion that you got.
Home to accept advocates for family peace on domestic violence. Really? To the peace department.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Pekovic. Any discussion? Just for the audience, the advocates for family peace are, uh, looking to have the city of BoV to have their, their vehicles with, uh, we support advocates for family peace with domestic violence on their squad cars, law enforcement for working together to, uh, combat domestic violence. So, that's what we're, moving on.
And they're just little magnets?
Yeah, little magnets, like, for the month of October. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right. Moving on, uh, Bertie Parker.
I had an addition on that.
You had an addition on that.
Oh, I'm sorry, part-time, sorry, Bertie.
So, I was just contacted, I don't even know, like, a week ago, like, Paul Drevol works part-time for us. Um, he never did do the training for us of the forty hours that we paid, not that he was looking to get paid, but he said, with, uh, one of our other guys being off a little bit, he said he wanted to just start trying to work part-time more. But he's struggling with the computers and he was just, I don't know, John's trying to make a question to you, but when he's, he said he volunteered to ride along for free and everything to learn the computer system. But he's just worried if something happened to him, if he got hurt, if he'd be covered under like, uh.
Work comp?
Work comp issue or something, just because he doesn't.
Well, I, I think as long as the council approves that, being sure.
Yeah, he said he volunteered his time riding, going ride alongs, he just was worried if something ever did happen with fighting with somebody or whatever. As long as he was in his police capacity, he'd be covered.
Be covered by work comp, yeah.
Is he on our, our pay list?
Yes. Yeah, and he didn't take advantage of the eight forty-hour training or whatever, so. He said those computers, he was just struggling, but he tried to learn it.
Could he spend some time at the sheriff's office or the agency?
He said he volunteered and do it, he just was worried about if he had to fight with somebody or whatever, or if he was, you know, was to get hurt, he was trying to learn it. I mean, I think a motion that he'd be covered under work comp, he's in the police duties, you know, got it, you're, even while he's volunteering.
Well, second. There was a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Bertie Parker.
Yeah. I think the best thing to do is we're just gonna have a joint meeting with both councils to discuss it, because I think it's pretty much agreed upon there for meeting that Deb and I are gonna go bring back something and then it's just gonna go back and forth if, if we just keep saying.
Technically, what they want is, they want a fifty-fifty split with the fire department itself. And, um, we said we would bring it back to our council and after that, we might have a joint meeting, but, um, Tara's been doing a little investigating and BoV has gone in with more valuable property on this joint venture to begin with. Our operating expenses for the year are half of what theirs is. Their gas capacity is, is out there, it's bigger.
Six times.
Six times bigger. And they want to go with this, we meant to spring with them according to calls. So, that, that's just not in the cards. But it was originally agreed in the contract that we review it for every three years. And what's gonna happen is they're gonna want us to go to fifty-fifty and we aren't gonna want, I mean, we just can't afford it.
After we receive money from our outline, uh, through the areas.
Yes, that's the contracts, they, they benefit by our contracts more than theirs.
Right, so the outline, we spent fourteen thousand taxpayer dollars after the, if I remember correctly. And then now we're spending a lot more than fourteen thousand dollars.
Right. And also, we have still not received anything from Corrine on the monies we've requested of what they paid. And that to me is, is not a cooperative type thing, but, you know, if it comes down to a vote in that agreement, the fire chief would make the deciding vote.
I don't think it's the agree, not in the agreement, out on the board, he doesn't get the vote on the agreement itself, that's work comp.
But I mean, if, if Corrine says yes and we say no, we're at a deadlock. So who is the decision maker and I believe what I read in that contract, that it is the fire chief.
The councils have the ultimate say, though.
I would say the, the.
I think we're supposed to be, sorry.
I think the council has the ultimate say on the joint powers agreement.
Right.
He has the final vote on things that are voted on at the fire board meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, but he really has no authority to enter into a agreement between the two cities.
Right.
So that would be the council.
But I'm still saying that it's gonna end up, it is gonna end up too far, too against BoV's court or against it, Corrine's court. And so this is going to continue, but at this time, I just don't see where, they have so much more to draw from.
Well, I think when we have our joint meeting, I think we need to have Mr. Isham come down again and explain everything, because our numbers haven't changed as far as tax revenue or anything.
It's supposed to be fifty-fifty for the building and a split for the fire department.
But they're trying to push fifty-fifty on the fire truck, right?
And BoV's fire truck, which.
Was.
Was created in, yeah.
And one of those, uh.
Johnson, Ryan. That's a tanker.
I mean.
So we came in with a, a, a lot of equity into the partnership. So that's just where it's sitting and. But I think, I mean, when we have a joint meeting, it'll, it'll be there.
I suggest that we have a budget meeting before you have a joint meeting.
Correct.
So you guys, some of you need a better understanding of.
Yeah, Tara's been doing a little investigation, so we have some ammunition and, and whatever, so.
I think we could save a couple of thousand dollars a year if we figure out what's drawn in that light.
Too bad we're standing.
And that maybe sounds like it's.
We need help, we need to get the elderly kids in here.
So I already saw a budget number of a hundred and forty thousand dollars for the fire department. If they want to go fifty-fifty, that's seventy-five thousand dollars, seven, yeah, seventy-five thousand dollars. When we were paying fourteen thousand.
I know, like I said, it is cost right now to come and combining of the two departments, that's cost BoV money.
Plus they got the troubleway ownership that we had, we had forty some thousand.
Right.
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 But it's just, it's gotta be both councils having to discuss it too.
Right.
Deb and I bring the stuff back every, every two weeks, you can have.
Right. One for everyone. Set up a meeting.
So once we get, yeah, once we get our budget meeting done and taken care of, then we can schedule a joint meeting. And the problem won't be pleasant.
I mean, it comes down to dollars and cents.
Right. But like I say, it got a little heated, even at our one last spring, it got a little argumentative and even at ours, it could have, but it didn't. But the point is, it's, you know, it is what it is.
Well, they said to, the chief said, well, you guys don't like it, you can always just get out of it. Contract, but that doesn't work.
No.
Then it's a set increase every year, well, you know, before long, we won't be able to afford that and you have to shut it down.
The council's over there?
Yeah. Well, he mentioned that that was an option.
It was an option, but.
And I'm thinking, well, yeah, that's true, but then by a side of our thirty-five percent.
And the value of all they could have.
Well, like I say, it, it's pretty complicated, but it doesn't have to be.
That's just common, you know.
Moving on.
Attorney John Dimmich.
I don't have anything. That was real fast. Yeah, I mean.
Calls members, utility numbers, or utility report? Tara?
Including for the video, nothing. Kurt's down there.
Numbers out and down.
A lot for Tara. Got some disconnects coming up here, probably Monday or Tuesday, I'll be doing those reporters.
Tara, can I have you, or if it's okay with the council, can I have you put a note into the Schuster residence? That her properties look like crap.
Yeah.
And I, and I have brought it up with Mr. Ho.
I know Pete's calling.
And it's getting to the point of bad. So they might even want to be reminded that, you know, they do own property and we, they answer to us as far as.
There's other jurisdictions that they have properties in and they're never an issue because they know that the ticket's gonna be in the mail within the day.
Right.
So that.
But I, I would like it official that they get the letter and if there's, if anybody has any other rentals that are looking that way, I mean, they need a note.
Yep.
They need a note. Tara, Tara, what did you do to that yet?
Yeah.
I understand, whatever you're saying, a ticket in the mail, does that come from the police or does that come from the?
Comes from the police department. What I'm saying is they know that other jurisdictions that they're told they need to do it, doesn't get done, boom.
And Bill has said that she, he would make a phone call to her, but, and I, and I believe he did, I mean, he told me that he did. But the point is, they can ignore that, they can't kind of ignore it when it comes from the council.
Let's say phone calls are already made next time, so.
Part of our issue though is still the ordinance that we have in place, which is getting closer. The three hundred and some page is almost done.
Right, okay, that's all I had.
So hopefully, hopefully that'll rectify. Hopefully that'll rectify that to them, so. All right. Eighth Avenue, White.
It was this, I called to find out if anything had been done and, um, and nothing happened yet with the same issues that were there before, so.
There will be a few less issues come off toward the person who goes in, look back. Uh, even pardon. That some of those trailers.
November, November first.
Huh?
November.
November, I mean, there will be, they'll be taking those trailers and stuff off, for sure. Cause they're not gonna move those.
Because if we really, though, I mean, if we are allowing people to park trailers on, they're hooked up to electricity and stuff, so people are staying in there, obviously. You wouldn't hook up to electricity if you weren't. That's been months now, so we've debated many times to why we don't have an RV parking account. Well, why don't we just let people park on the streets and we could have a whole RV parking in the whole town? I mean, I'm just saying, that's not allowed and it wasn't allowed a month ago, it wasn't allowed two months ago, and it's still there, it's still happening.
Well.
And that's, and then the other one is being parked all with the sidewalk, there's still an ASV parked on the sidewalk, trailers parked on the sidewalk.
I know that Chief Ho was there to talk to him, like he had called me, but you realize some of the things that have happened in town recently, in the last three weeks. There's been, so, so, I mean.
Heavy duty stuff.
So, the issue is, where's the priority, and I'm pretty sure it's BoV, I do understand that this has been going on too long, I get that, but he did make an effort to make contact with Eighth Avenue. I spoke to him about it, um, but I also know what he's got going on now as well, so. I think when he's here next, we'll put these things on the next agenda so we can discuss with him these issues and, uh.
Go from there?
Go from there. If that works.
No, that's fine, I just, I don't want to see the same thing happen that has seemed to happen in the past where we talk about it at one meeting and then we kind of like go and we don't talk about it again. I'll just keep talking about it until something gets done, so maybe if people get tired of me talking about it, then I'll, something get done, I'm just saying.
All right, anything else? Moving on, um, can't read my camera, you know.
And the letters, the citizens' letters?
Yep. The letters concern citizens.
Just, um, again, uh, it starts with the winters property and I think that we're addressing, I think that that will be dealt with at the next meeting, right? I mean, I think that we're still working on that one.
He's coming to the next week, he can make it to that, so he's coming to the first meeting.
Okay, all right, and so we'll deal with that, that was first part, um. Be a little, I, I think the second part is illegal burning of products and scrapyard activities, which I, I think we are dealing with that, I think that what we said in the past is that they have a ticket and now it's in court, I believe. Do we know that, where that's at?
Um, top of my head, I, I, um, I don't get, like, I know we had, up to now, I don't believe I've seen anything that's been in court, but that doesn't mean that in two weeks, we don't have it on a calendar, but if I get a name, uh, and see if, and all I have to do is look it up on our computer if there's a paper issue, I don't know where it's going.
Okay. I do wish that maybe.
Sure.
Okay. Um, and then, um, I think the last issue is sidewalks and snow removal and I'm just really hoping, cause I, this is a concern for me too and something that we've talked about and I'm kind of waiting at this point for the ordinance to come up so that we can discuss what the ordinance will say about people who are moving snow from their sidewalks and keeping their sidewalks clean. So, okay.
Anything else?
No, that's it, I'm sorry, that's the whole.
Okay. Um, moving on to City Court.
So we get a letter from Corrine, they're asking for the donation to help pay for lifer's.
It's a coalition question, your supporter, $1,500 to help with salary, the life brands and cotton park for the 2019 season, can we budget $1,500?
We have a year of them.
Did we approve it again this spring?
Yeah.
We did. We approved it in the budget, but I guess I haven't checked the budget numbers to see where we're at.
We really have to set my name.
Well, we just have one, yeah, I mean, but it's all part of the general.
Right.
Yes, we did.
Tara, why don't you check on it and we'll take our time and see where we're at when getting it back to Corrine. I, I'm sorry, but it is what it is, I'd like to check and see what we have in the budget for it, if it was approved in the springtime.
Yeah, I remember we can make it with it.
Okay.
All right.
Oh, do you want me to move on to the next item? If everybody was agreeing to take no action at this time, okay. So you guys all received an email that Carla is resigning, so we seem to lose the resignation.
Is there a motion to approve?
Well, what have we done?
She just. Don't look at me.
Is there a motion to. Well, I'm willing to make a motion. Approve her resignation.
All right. Further discussion, I think that would need to be very, rather, I can improve her service in the city council.
Now that includes my motion.
Yeah, and we all signed it. Um, I hate to see her go, but it's understandable. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed?
Me.
Three to two, three approve, aye and aye.
We don't.
Gotta show her some support.
I will approve it for moving on to be doing better things.
Yes, we do.
Right.
We don't want it to go longer, yeah, so.
And I, and I don't agree with the resignation because it will be up to you now.
Yeah. So.
Okay, so then the next item. Deborah needs to be added as a signer on the account set first time, no, thank, effective immediately.
Motion to approve, are we advertising then, or?
Yeah, we're gonna talk about that, I was gonna read that.
Yeah, motion by Johnson is your second. Second, minor nail, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
That question. Well, I'm sorry, don't make it quick. In what capacity am I signing, as a council member, please?
Well, it doesn't matter, right, we have, we have to have here, as a council member, as three, they have three signatures.
Correct.
So, and sometimes, you know, goes in for surgery, he may not be available or whatever, he gets held up at work.
I'll just, that's all I just wanted to say.
So what that means is that we also need to remove Carla as a signer on the account effective October 7th. Her last day of work will be at the 4th.
Is there a motion for that?
Yes.
I'm gonna keep going, I'm gonna motion to remove Carla as a signer on the account effective October 7th.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
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 No one's opposed.
And then, since we took care of that, you guys will need to decide what we wanna do for the position.
Are we advocating for a treasurer and library, parking library?
That's up to you guys.
Oh, that is an option.
That's an, yes, I, I mean, I think it's your best option, but there are other options, but that seems.
Well, I think we need all of our options on our plate.
Well, you can structure however you want, you could, you could have what Bill Carlos's position asks is, you could just hire somebody to do the library part and appoint the treasurer duties to somebody else. You could. You could go back to clerk slash treasurer and have an annual audit, I mean.
Crazy situation, right. If a treasurer was appointed, is there a legal conflict of interest anywhere? If it was a state already employee?
It shouldn't be, I mean.
Or, or even a council member four, I mean, I'm just looking at options.
Council member might be.
Might be.
I haven't checked my number, I don't.
I know, I just say, um, yeah.
I don't think it could be a council.
Yeah, but I would really like to see all the options that, and make sure we're within our legal bounds because technically, under the clerk treasurer is separate, we have to have the treasurer to assign the signatories for the checks.
Right.
So.
So, yeah, so we're covered until October 7th. So by October 7th, we need another signer.
When is our next meeting?
Um, October, what is it?
7th.
7th?
7th.
Sorry. 7th. So, I mean, so you have several options of which way you wanna go.
We don't have anybody by October 7th, what are you saying, we can't sign any checks?
I don't know, I have to call, what do we do there, John?
I don't wanna rush to get somebody.
We might, you might.
Yeah, we have to. I mean, to be temporarily, appoint someone till we can get someone to advertise it.
So we can do that, I agree.
Temporary.
Yeah. I'll do the lead call. See, but I have seen no reason you can't do a temporary appointment.
Cause you just don't wanna rush into hiring a treasurer.
Well, I mean. Well, as, as the mayor, I'm only making a motion, but I think I'd like to make a motion that we should look at a senior individual in the city, you could temporarily go over that spot, signature duties, who's usually here, and my, my motion would be that Kevin Odden would be the individual for a time being until hired in person.
What do you mean by senior?
Senior employee.
Yeah, senior employee, you know.
How's that?
You know, supervisory.
Is that what?
Is that like a contract issue, Kevin, for pay or anything like that, to me?
The, I think, I think you can sign duties.
Oh, really?
You can assign duties, you can, I mean, to the contract, you can sign, right, just to any one of us.
Well, I'll second that.
But these are your duties, whatever.
It's on a temporary basis, so.
I'll second that.
Under the circumstances, we could do that.
We should have the second.
But that wouldn't be until October 7th, right, effective then.
Maybe we'll add some of that.
You don't do the second, issue's done. No, cause he, he can direct his duties, he doesn't really get to say anything.
Yes, the council according to the contract, indirect and.
I want to ask you at the level of charity responsible.
Respectfully, should we?
We're keeping it legally safeguarded until we hire.
It's just temporary.
Any further discussion? All right, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kevin.
He's so happy. Aw, Kevin, one day.
So anything else, Tara, for City Court? Moving on, unfinished business, do we have any unfinished business?
Maybe just Tara can get a hold of Corrine and see if we can have her come and shake.
I don't want to go to that till we have a budget meeting.
Right, cause there's a bunch of items we have, so I may consider.
So next week, I'll send a email, schedule a budget meeting for you guys.
I'll move to the jury. What are you doing now?
No unfinished business, any new business that we might, as the nice council agenda?
I think we got enough, don't we? For the new business.
All right, now up to the German.
I'll move to the jury.
Your motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, you almost pulled it instead.
No, I was thinking, they.